Certification of closed session pursuant to subsection 2.2-3712D of the Code of Virginia 1950 is amended. Each member of the Board of Supervisors upon roll call certifies that to best of their knowledge only business public matters lawfully exempted from the open meeting requirements under the Virginia Freedom of Information Act and only business matters that were identified in the motions by which the closed meeting was convened, were heard, discussed, or considered in the meeting by the Board of Supervisors. Any members of the Board of Supervisors who believe that there was a departure from the requirements shall state so prior to the vote indicating substance of the departure that in his or her judgment has taken place. Are there any supervisors who believe that departure has taken place? Seeing none, if you agree that matters heard, discussed, or considered during the closed meeting were only pursuant to the motions by which the closed meeting was convened, please signify by saying yea or yes. Tim Lovelace?
Yes.
Luann Wallace?
Yes.
Carl Ray?
Yes.
David E.
Yes.
Steve Brady?
Yes.
Ari Ferguson?
Yes.
Rebecca Di?
Yes.
That concludes the certification of closed session.
At this time we'll have our invocation with Pastor Huber Porter from Lakeview Church. Will you please stand and remain standing before the pledge?
Father, we thank you Lord for the blessings and blessings of your grace and mercy and grace. Father, I pray this evening for our county, for our supervisors that have such a huge responsibility to govern this county. I pray, Lord, that it's Solomon, pray to his father, Lord, for an understanding heart to judge his people, that he twenty years will live the same time. Father, the job is very difficult, it's very hard, but, Lord, we pray that as they do it, they do what they think is the right thing, and that's all that any of us believe. We thank you for this great county, Lord, here in the great southwest, it's home to all of us, and we love it, and we respect it, and thank you for it. We thank you for this great country, Lord, that is so strong, it's a wonderful Lord that provides so great opportunities for each and every one of us. Father, we thank you and praise you for your blessings to this day, we thank you for our county, and we thank you for the United States of America. For in the name of Jesus we make this prayer.
Amen.
Amen.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in the name of God, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, do we have anything that needs to be amended to the agenda, anything added? We've received a late notice from Red Cross that March is the recognition month for a Red Cross. So, do we have anyone to make a motion to amend the agenda we need to add back to?
Manager, I'll make that motion to amend the agenda. How do you want to place that motion?
Well, so, did you say?
Number four.
Number four, okay, under request.
I'm going to move.
Thank you.
Sign it.
Call favor?
Aye.
Anybody else have anything they need to add to amend the agenda tonight? Okay. All right. At this time, we do have the approval of amended agenda. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Okay, our first is a public hearing. Mickey Ray? Are we going to continue? Okay. All right, at this time, we do need to amend or to extend our public hearing with Brooke Ashley and David Leonard with the Elgarden School property.
Chairman, I make a motion we extend that public hearing until our next meeting.
Second.
Chairman, I withdraw that motion. We have one year or two. I'd like to change, I noted yet, to change the language. Move to continue the public meeting until the next regular scheduled meeting on April 1st, 2019, to continue in negotiations as authorized for the Virginia Code, section 15.2-1800B.
So, Steve, you're in it. Lou?
I'm taking it.
All right. All those in favor?
so we're not going to do the PowerPoint at this time?
Aye.
All right, we will move that to later. All right, our next public hearing is with Mickey Ray with the Russell County Building
I'm going to go first.
We have it taped before.
Inspector, our unsafe building ordinance.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, the first one you have is, I've got certain properties in here, is going to record
Mickey?
He's coming.
He's coming.
what we've done on them. You got the first one, the warrant, Lacey, have it.
Mr. Ray, the public hearing is just on the change in the language of the ordinance. If you have reports, I don't know that that would be appropriate under the public hearing. This is just, this is just to change the language to give it more clarity on when a fine would be levied against someone who did not comply with repairing or removing.
We're going to do the other part later, right?
Yes.
I don't know where to start. I know y'all were going to talk about it and say, give me more guidance on when we were going to actually find someone, because I've been going and doing, you know, if someone was financially unable or older, I was given more time to do it. And I thought we was going to convene here and talk about when we actually going to do the finding.
Yes, and I think that's what's before the board right now, is to decide. I know I made a recommendation at the last meeting that the ordinance be amended, for you to give a recommendation based on the seriousness of the issue, what an appropriate timeframe would be to fix the problem. And when you made that recommendation to the board, they would then vote to either accept it or set a new timeframe, and then at that point, when that timeframe expired, then that fine would be levied. That was the recommendation I made, and so that's what's up for the board's consideration tonight. Is that, do you think that would be a helpful remedy to you to know when a fine should be levied?
Yes, but each, each project's going to have a different time limit on it.
Yes, and if I may, on paragraph five, it says, "Very good, the loan, the landowner to remove, repair, or secure any building wall or any other structure that might endanger the public health or safety of any other residents of the county after having been provided the aforementioned notice and compliance period." The issue is the compliance period.
Right.
Is it 30 days and then thereafter, every project is...
60 days.
Depending upon the evaluation of the building inspector.
Yes.
And it's basically giving you the leeway to come to us and say, I've worked with them, they are working on it, this is an elderly couple, or this is a couple that their children won't be able to help them until summer months, and it gives you leeway to ask us to say, I've sent out three letters, I've visited three times, now I want you all to take some action. So, it's given us a compliance period, letting us decide what you need. So, Miss Wallace, you want to add some more?
Yes.
Yes, do you want to add some more? I think the penalty is not stiffening us myself, but, okay.
And what you would ask, you would say, based upon your assessment situation, I've given the notice, I think 30 days is sufficient compliance time, and then the board would then take that up and approve it, or say, well, no, we think 15 days is appropriate, or we think, you know, 45 days is appropriate. That would give the boards control, but it would also allow you to take cases on a case-by-case basis, because it's not going to be, they're not going to be the same across the board, but the board would still vote and give you a definite time period based upon your recommendation, if it gets to that point.
Okay, tonight, you're saying mainly if we decide 30 days will be that cutoff, that's what they vote on tonight, right?
For a specific project first.
Right.
A specific landowner.
What's your recommendation, Mickey? I mean, is 30 days too soon? Is you need 60 days, 90 days? The do is basically...
We go right back to saying that we're situations, did?
Say.
Whatever, please, the board, if you want to start with 30 days, and then I can come back and say, there's no way we can do it in 30 days.
We've been doing it for three and a half years, and we still don't have it done, so that's our problem, is we just need to make sure we get it done, so the public understands everybody is equal and fair, we're all on the same page, we're all on the same playing field.
And that's where it would come into play, is after the requisite notices have gone out, that's when he comes back to whatever the regular scheduled meeting is and makes that recommendation, and it will be voted on each time for what is the appropriate time period. So, the ordinance itself will not contain the definite time period, but the board will decide that when it's presented by Mr. Ray.
30 days, it'll be fine for me to come back and tell you my recommendation, yes.
It'll be 30 days from when the postmark that you sent him the notice, right?
That'd be a good one.
Any other comments? Anybody else has any thoughts? And it will, Katie, it will still have the language of, shall be punished by a $1,000 civil penalty?
Yes, I know, if that's something that you wish to change, I think you would have to re-advertise and advertise what you wish the penalty to be, because the public hearing for the day was to define the compliance period.
Just on the compliance period, 30 days, compliance period, 30 days, because that's already stated in the ordinance prior to us.
Just to get a little more clarity, each one of these has sent certified mail, so it'd be the date from the certified mail per the ordinance.
Okay. All right, now, this is a public hearing, so if anyone has a comment, any of the public, please step forward, now's the time, if you want to step forward to the podium, state your name and address, and give your thoughts and comments on this compliance period, and then we'll let you show your pictures, your videos, after five.
Right.
PowerPoint after five.
We do.
Okay. Any comments from the public? As seen now, we will close this with the building inspector on the 30 days of unsafe building ordinance. All right. So, woman, make a motion to change that. Yes, to change it, yes.
We'll make a motion, we change the compliance period to 30 days, initially with the option for the inspector to come back, if he needs further time.
Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, 30 days added to that. All right, our next public hearing is with Debbie Milton with Cumberland Plateau Planning District for the Belfast Water Project.
Hello, my name is Debbie Milton, I'm with the Cumberland Plateau Planning District, and this is the second public hearing for the community development block grant for the Belfast Waterline Extension Project, Phase One. I sent a resolution and some assurances that have to be signed that go with the application on March 29th. There are 73 households in Phase One of the project. Let's see here, make sure I get this right. The project total will be $750,000, of which we have received $100,000 from the Southwest Virginia Water, Wastewater Fund, and $125,000 from the Coalfield Water Development Fund, and we'll be asking for $550,000 from the block grant, like I said, at the end of March. We have done surveys up there, and of the 73 households, it's determined that 59% of the households are low to moderate income. You'd have to be at least 51% to be able to apply for block grants, so we have reached that goal, and like I said, I have included, I've asked for y'all to pack it to have a resolution, assurances, so I'm here to answer any questions that you might have about the project.
And we'll start about September, is that right, if it's approved?
Yes, block grant usually announces about August, September, and we'll start generally within a few months after that. I think the interim told me it would be a 90-day project. I'm sorry, nine months project, nine months project.
And if block grant does declare, this will be 100% grant project?
Yes.
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 Thank you all. And I guess you might need to make the motion to get that signed to me. Like I said, I don't have to have it this afternoon, just before the grant goes in, okay? The resolution actually just states what I told you about the money and then about the LMI, that's the one. All right, is there anyone in the public that needs to make a comment, or wants to state anything about this block grant, about this water project? Anyone in the public want to speak on it?
Is this just Phase One?
Yeah, I think there's about 200, some households have known that can use public water, so we're just going to take it a little at a time, start with Phase One, and if there's a, if they want the water and need it, we'll go on to Phase Two.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Okay, need a motion to accept this?
Manager, oh, go ahead.
I'll make that motion to accept the resolution. I'll say.
Any comments, those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right, that should close our public hearings. Next on our agenda is the acknowledgement of some proud kids and proud parents, our Allstate Wrestling Team, our Allstate Football, and Allstate Volleyball. Great, happy to see all these kids here. So, first, our acknowledgement is the 2018 Allstate Wrestling Team Honors. Also, do you have those ready? Can you want to list, name our kids, please?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, see, is Mr. Colston here?
Captain, please, sir.
Logan Smith. And we're bringing up all the high school residents. Casey Bush. Governor Jesse.
Yes.
And of course, our coaches. I think Michael Whip here.
Yes.
Yes, all the coaches come to. More the pictures, rather than...
Heather, how would you like to do this with each individual school? And...
Mr. Ray, to move that way? Yes. Okay, and then... Everybody's again. All right, on the count of three, one, two, three. Anybody else have pictures?
Since living is my dish, I can be honored to do this. Congratulations, you did a great job. Yes, sir.
Yep, wait on that.
Do you want to take some with the flag, since they're proceeded? With the flag?
One side is facing, the other side is...
Yes. And then, the rest of the flag will work?
Yeah, we're good, that's how it is.
Hold on, can we get one? Okay. Don't move.
You tell us whatever, say where you are and switch the signal.
Yeah, okay, now, Castlewood, say it. Ready? Castlewood, Heather, yes, okay. Keegans. Those, Peans?
How many batteries they have? You're up.
Yeah. Thank you.
Well, we're very excited to present the certificate of excellence, and you guys are really overdressed compared to how I saw you last time. Go Castlewood, right? All right, Casey Bush?
Yeah.
Want to tell us how many times you've won?
I would say twice.
There it is. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Can you hear us?
No.
Hang on, don't move.
Congratulations.
Good job.
All right, can I listen? See?
That's what I said. We need track shows up there, too, how many trophies, how many road trophies, but... All right, Lovey? Tell her what else, tell me, tell me, change.
Two-time state champ, and a one-time finalist, or three-time finalist.
It's my fourth state championship.
Wonderful.
Next is the Lebanon High School volleyball. Congratulations Gilbert and Dean Price from Cassidyburg, D-16, perfect.
Go, Dennis.
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 Okay, hang on, don't move.
Back up there.
Good job.
Alright, can I also see?
That's what I said.
We need traffic help out there too, how many traffic, how many road traffic, but... Alright, Lovett. Tell her and tell us, how many, how many changes?
Two-time state champ, and a one-time finalist, or three-time finalist.
It's my fourth state championship.
Next is the Lebanon High School volleyball. Congratulations. Jake Gilbert and Dean Price from Cassidyburg. Three sixteen, perfect.
Stay right there. If it's Lovett's, can you put out the food that way by there? And then just stay right there. And I think that will get everybody. Alright, one, two, three. Alright, thank you.
Next is Lebanon High School coaches here. Michael Webb, Chris Conley, Stan, Stan, sixteen. Allstate.
Press, sit down, behave.
Alright, one, two, three. One, two... Thank you.
And often, parents and grandparents made lots of rug trips, sacrificed, maybe sat picked up, ran and picked up uniforms, ran back to the house and had supper ready. Been there or no, they can't do it without mommies and daddies and grandparents, appreciate it. And next month, we'll have more of our children to brag about. And next on our agenda are our presentations for county. And first up is Dr. Greg Graham with Russell County Schools and the school budget. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Madam Chair, board members, and Mr. Lester. We appreciate the opportunity to speak to the board this evening on a project we believe is overdue. First, I want to share this request would not come to the board this evening. If we believed it would create a hardship on taxpayers of Russell County. Additionally, this request would not come to the board this evening. If our teachers, staff, and employees of Russell County were not prioritized before this project. It appears we will have the opportunity for an increase in employee compensation that we have not seen for several years. This coupled with an attempt to make modest improvements to our insurance program, this creates a perfect storm for Russell County. The storm, where our employees are better compensated, our insurance program is improved, an overdue project is addressed, and all this occurs with no negative impact to our citizens. This journey began for me nearly twenty-five years ago. As a teacher and coach, I had my first experience in Lebanon. A football game as Giles played Lebanon in the VHSL State Playoffs in nineteen ninety-four. I remember three distinct, distinctive things about that evening. First, what a rich environment with incredible support as we witnessed two communities that obviously love their football program. Second, what a view I had as I stood on the press box to watch this contest. Finally, with all the things that I had heard about Lebanon High School and Russell County, all the great things, I was surprised to see the rest of the facility. I was really expecting so much more. Lebanon and Giles played each other on three more occasions, twice at Giles and then at Lebanon again during my son's senior year in two thousand and six. At this time, I was no longer a coach but the principal. Again, I was surprised by the lack of improvements at Bryant Field. Finally, when I was allowed to become part of the Russell County family in two thousand and sixteen, I attended my first game at Bryant Field as a superintendent in August of that year. Again, the same field, with the same observations, and now something new, concerns. Madam Chair, I'd like to you to know and share a vision for what we can do in Russell County, what we can do for the community of Lebanon in regards to our facility at Bryant Field. A facility that not only supports the football program, but an ever-growing soccer program as well. I would like to share the verbiage that will accompany the Russell County School Board's FY20 budget if needed approved Thursday evening by our school board members. The current football soccer facility for Lebanon High School is located on the campus of Lebanon Middle School. In research, no improvements have been made to this facility in over twenty years. Staffs are very concerned about the continued use of the facility in its current state. Bleachers are crumbling and are non-conforming as various pitches and angles exist. There is not a facility for the home team to dress or use for halftime needs other than the interior of the middle school. The concession stand on the west end of the facility is a great concern. The locker room facility for the visiting team has fallen into disrepair as the restroom facilities attached to the building are inoperable and the roof needs replaced. There are no restrooms designated for the home or visitor side as porta-potties or the restrooms within the middle school are used. The entire facility is not ADA compliant as there are multiple levels on the home and visitor side of the field that are not fully accessible. Finally, the four corners of the playing field are too close to the fence surrounding the field as one corner is approximately four foot from the fence. Staff believes there's two options to alleviate this issue. One would be to engage in significant renovation to the facility where it's currently located. I'd like to take a moment and go through this list through the PowerPoint and share some information. An example of the bleachers, again, you can see the crumbling. And the one little spot I want to point out right here, this was a stage. Stage over the early parts of the winter. Again, you see the facility there where it's crumbled. Sir, could you stand in front of the podium and tell us how we have to see it?
Absolutely.
This deals with the non-conforming part. If you take a look at the bleacher, excuse me, the bench here, wood and the step, you see how they're even right here? If you go across to the other side, I think you can see the lip where this section is sunk. That's obviously a tripping hazard and again, a concern. Again, I think you can see some of the angle pitches and so forth that I was speaking of. If you were to go look at the facility in detail, you'd see that there's five different sets of bleachers, five different times that bleachers will fit in there. And all of them, again, are at different angles, different pitches. This one not only is pitched out, it's also pitched, the back of it is up. We did commission a study, and that is with this board here, of some things that we could consider with the renovation of the facility. I mentioned earlier that we have no home dressing room facility. Our students actually walk through behind the home bleachers here, go into the middle school, and then coach addresses them for halftime and pre-game needs there. The recommendation, if we were to go with some renovation, would be to have a modest facility here. And again, modest being thirty-foot by thirty-foot square building where our students could go, student athletes could go in during halftime and before game to work with coach and staff. Current concession stand on the west end of the stadium, we put up new plywood material over the roof to try to keep the, you know, the water and such out. But the facility has aged to the point that whenever it rains, we have water that runs obviously inside of the walls. We have, of course, some issues here, some other growth and such. Of course, that's electrical issue that we can correct, but again, you have the open wiring. There you have the area outside where the actual concession stand window is. You'll see the deterioration of that area. And again, the area here above that, that has access to water constantly. On the visiting side, with our locker room facilities for our guests, here you have an idea of the area as far as the roof and so forth. This, this is rotted and would need to be replaced. Some of the piping is seen as collapsed in the plumbing of the building as well for some of the restrooms that are attached to either end. The options, there are options for both renovation and simply tearing down this facility and rebuilding it. Again, you have some more areas there with some rod and such here. And again, boarded up broken windows. This again is another piece of that or another angle. And you see this entire roof area is swaying and such, again, it would need to be replaced. This is the facility on the ladies' side for our visitors. This is the facility that they have available to them when you open the door. And we couldn't open up the men's, we couldn't get it open. Inside of the facility, you see the restroom facilities there for our visiting team. Shower facility, hot water heater, boarded up windows, again. As far as restrooms goes, again, on the home side, we go now, we go inside of the facility. We pay an SRO to man the hallway so people can go inside of Lebanon Middle School to use the restroom. The recommendation, again, would be a very modest facility here, a twenty-five by twenty-five square restroom facility for the ladies and the gentlemen. Again, right now, it's inside the main building through these doors. The only thing we have at the facility that's ADA compliant now is this area. ADA compliance in the twenty-first century means that these facilities have to be accessible for all, all patrons. So if we were to have someone that did need some type of additional assistance, they need to be able to access all levels of the field. They have to be able to go down on their own and buy a bag of popcorn and a soda. They have to be able to, on their own, enter the facility, find a safe place to observe the ballgame. On the visitor's side, this is your ADA compliance issues. Set of steps here, obviously, and again, a ticket area here with another set of steps. Again, very, very problematic. For someone in a wheelchair to watch a football game from the visiting side, they're basically going to have to sit in the parking lot and watch the game from their vehicle or have someone carry them up the steps to get them to the field level itself. The recommendation from the study would be to asphalt this area, have a road coming up from the right. And then, in the front of the facility here, you would have, again, some ADA area available for people to, in need of wheelchair and such, to be able to get to and watch the contest. Handrails and so forth, some fixes are a lot easier than others. But this is the visitor's side, again, there's no, there's no handrails. Also, there's no area, and we can, again, retrofit this, but there's no area for a wheelchair to be, someone in a wheelchair to come and watch the contest from the bleachers. Another issue, the proximity of the playing area was mentioned. You see the black line here, okay? This is near the Lions Club concession. You can see the distance here, it's about five feet. Very dangerous. You could have a football player or a soccer player running full speed left to right. That area right there, if they catch a football right there, it's a touchdown. If they continue on five feet, they're going in, you head first into the fence. And again, I've marked that off just to show the distance. This side again is approximately five feet. This side's not an issue, it's about twenty-nine feet. And then finally, the corner where the scoreboard is, is a big issue there, it's about four feet. And the problem you have there is, of course, there's nowhere to remove that fence and build a retaining wall or a platform area there because you have about a sixty-degree incline at that point. And finally, another issue, the easement or the right-of-way concerns. If you were to, again, you guys know the area that I'm speaking up here, but this area right here is in proximity to that state-maintained road. And we actually have, once you get to the goalpost, you have everything on the visitor's side of the goalpost is actually in a state-maintained easement. Now, again, the recommendations for the study, and this study was done in twenty eighteen, would be to basically replace, tear down, replace the Lions Club concession here. The other two red squares that you see are the twenty-five by twenty-five restroom facility that I spoke of and the thirty by thirty modest fieldhouse. You see the gray area around those buildings, that's a cement area for ADA compliance. Aluminum bleachers, and there's a problem there. Again, the bleachers that we currently have are so deteriorated that they've been tested and they can't support the, be the base structure for aluminum bleachers. So we actually would have to go into the current bleachers and jackhammer that out, dispose of it because the consistency of the product that's currently there isn't substantial enough to support the aluminum bleachers. On the home side again, or visitor's side, significant renovation or just redoing this facility here where the visitors come from, for our ballgames. This area here especially, you see a little red dot? That is a chairlift, I call it the ash pit. The recommendation is, basically the only thing we can do is to go in here and build a, an area, cement area, and have a chairlift placed in that area so that we can have our visitors take their wheelchair into the lift, the lift will bring it up to the field level. You see the gray here? That is simply a walk over to a retrofitted area right there on the bleachers for the accessibility for our guests. Final piece to the puzzle was simply some new lights to go on top of the pre-existing light poles. This project, again, these studies are just after studies. They are based on standards, price-wise, at the time of the study. This study is roughly about two-point-one million dollars to do this. The second option would be to move the location of the football soccer facility to the campus of Lebanon High School. This option not only addresses all noted deficiencies, it will also solve the issue of fan parking. It includes the installation of a new synthetic track that will allow LHS to expand boys' and girls' track and be able to host local, district, region, and state competitions. Additionally, Castlewood and Honaker High Schools can schedule time to host invitational events as well. Currently, none of our high schools host a single track event. This after all three high schools have programs. And to review that, turn here. And as you look at the facility here, this, again, is a study that was done in twenty eighteen. This study basically has a facility here. This building would be a weight room facility, coaches' offices. This would also be the locker room facility for boys and girls designed to host ninety to a hundred students on both sides. You also have aluminum bleachers with a capacity of fifteen-hundred on the home side with press box on top of that. You also have an area here that would deal with concessions, restroom facility, and ticket taking. On the visitor's side, you'd have, again, a facility here with the aluminum bleachers for about a thousand individuals. Handicap accessibility, ADA compliance would be here in this area. And then here, you would have a locker room facility and restroom facility for our visiting friends. This also would have as an option, a synthetic surface, field turf, if you will. And again, this would include a synthetic track surface to allow us the flexibility and our students the flexibility to use and host the facility for track events. This issue gains the track, this, or option, gains the track. This option also takes a major step towards solving the parking issues. With the student parking, the faculty parking and so forth in this area, and again, this grass area here, if you went to a softball game, you've seen a lot of people parking here. We would give that some organization and such so that we could use that facility as well for parking. We would have nearly one thousand parking spots available with a facility of this nature. And again, with the turf field, this would be, again, you have to look at the cost factors when the study was done, but roughly four-point-five, four-point-six million with turnkey operation, including lights, scoreboard, field timers, P.A. system. Again, a turnkey, turnkey operation. After all form and thorough discussion, we believe the best option, Madam Chair, is to move the facility to where it's designed to be located originally.
to move the facility to where it's designed to be located originally 35 years ago on the campus of Lebanon High School. This alleviates concerns about hidden or unknown issues if we were to choose the renovating of the current facility. And again, parking and track are two new gains that we have with this new facility that we would not have with the renovation. Finally, Madam Chair, someone may say, why do we need to do something now? We've made it work so far. My response would be, we have two options. We can make the decision to address these issues as we see fit, based on our timelines, or we can leave it, we can leave it, excuse me, to fade the chance, at which point these decisions will be made for us through potentially injury or ADA compliance issues. Madam Chair, I appreciate your opportunity. I have handouts for the board members of both plans, 11 by 17, and I'd be more than happy to answer any questions in the quarter and a half.
Is it the total cost of the, of the field at the high school? It listed as 3.5 to 4.5 million?
It does. If you look at the top right, Mr. Brady, there's an option in the section there in the legend, says the synthetic for the turf fields is $1 million add-on. With that, you'd have a few deductions.
That's, that's the difference between four and a half.
Yes, exactly. And again, the fields, you know, they're becoming much more common now. We obviously have one in our district, or in our county, one in our district. We also have some in our neighboring school divisions. I guess the one that I know of, most recent one I know of, was Galax High School recently put field turf on their football field.
I think we've discussed it some, but also on the old field, we'd also have to do something on that, right?
We could.
Bleachers.
Exactly. It depends on how the use would be defined for that facility. And when you're talking about a Friday night evening, or a Tuesday or Thursday evening with our soccer programs, again, there's a higher expectation and so forth when it comes to that facility versus shutting down or closing off some of the current facility at Lebanon Middle School and not using three concession stands, maybe we just use one. And again, I think we can do some of that work on our own as well, because it won't be so time-sensitive. This project, once, if approved, this facility can be actually, once ground is broke, nine to 11 months, believe it or not, you'll have that facility done. But yes, that's a great point, and there will be still some attention that needs to be paid to the current facility, but again, I think that will be something that we can use at our own time and so forth to define exactly what we want to do at that facility. And I guess another point for the board supervisors to consider is the fact that they're building these fields now, they're so durable, the fact that you could have a Crooked Road concert series brought to Russell County, and it can be right here on this field. You could have that 1,500-seat-capacity home side concessions, ticket area, and you could have the Crooked Road coming to Russell County, and we've got one of the best facilities around for that, and it wouldn't do any damage to the facility.
So you are proposing missing your budget Thursday night? Do you want to present it again?
The board, yeah, we, Madam Chair, we had our open public forum at the beginning of this month, or, excuse me, beginning of February, dealing with our budgets, and with that, we constructed our budget in need, and our board has reviewed that. The board will have a final vote, yes ma'am, this Thursday, and if that be the case, by the Code of Virginia, we have to present the board supervisors with a budget in need by March 31. So with Thursday's meeting, hopefully we'll be able to do that, and I can walk that over and present that to Mr. Lester.
Any other questions?
No.
I have a question, if you don't mind. Currently, how many students are enrolled in the Lebanon High School, potentially to be and coming from Lebanon Middle School?
The number of students at Lebanon High School is roughly about 640 kids.
Yes, sir.
So we'll have 1/5 of that, so you're talking about 135 students that will be rolling over as our seniors leave, and we have our students coming over from Lebanon, about 125 to 135 students.
And with that question, I'm going to segue into another one, if you don't mind.
Yes, ma'am.
Five years ago, what was your enrollment?
Five years ago, I would have to go back to see, but I would assume that to be roughly about 700 at Lebanon High School.
Five years ago, 660, 675.
And today, again?
About 640.
Yes.
So do you have any projections as to loss of students at all in this next couple of years?
Yes, ma'am, we have to, we have to provide that every year to the Department of Education. To summarize that point, the last two years, we've lost roughly 80, 85 students a year. This year, though, we've, hopefully, we're stabilizing, and we're about 35 students less than where we were at the end of last school year. So we're very optimistic, and our AVM has been very stable throughout the year, so we're hoping that maybe we, between the work that the board supervisors have done to attract new businesses and such, maybe that we kind of hit that point and want to maybe bottom out, come back up.
That would be good.
Yes, ma'am.
And this is at no cost to our taxpayers? The school board can handle the cost of this?
Well, let me explain that, Madam Chair. Yes, we have debt service, and basically, there's two ways to handle debt service. By the Code of Virginia, board supervisors are responsible for facility and plan. So when it comes to building a new school or something of great renovation, that falls to the board supervisor's responsibility. There's two ways that we've handled this, and we've got dozens and dozens of projects that have been going on over the last 20 years. With this, we have debt service, and there's two ways to handle this. The board supervisors can keep the debt service and the money associated with paying the yearly debt, or they can give us the debt, and we carry it on our books, and then you give us the money to pay for that debt service as well. Either way works just as fine, six and one-half dozen of another. In Russell County, we do the latter. So with that being said, our appropriations are roughly $1.3 million for debt service. We have debt service that has burned off. As you pay that last payment on your card, you've got that money that's freed up now. Same type of situation. We have debt service that is burning off. Last year, $98,000, about $110,000 this year, and we're projecting roughly about $110,000 next year as well. But I'm working with Mr. Lester, that's $325,000 worth of debt service that's burned, you know, that's burned off. If the board supervisors would be willing to level fund that part of our budget, the debt service, debt load side of that, so again, no new money, just simply level fund what we've done, we could take that money and apply it toward whatever the payment would be. If we were to have, be able to make a small down payment on this at the end of the year, and let's say we financed $4 million, that $4 million would probably be less than $300,000, don't you think, Mr. Lester? Yeah. So with that being said, we actually may have even a few thousands of dollars left over after that. So again, as I said at the beginning of my presentation, it's a, it's a perfect storm, it really is. Normally, you don't have three consecutive years where you're burning off 80, 70, 80, $1,000, okay? But we're looking at, again, about over a three-year window, about $325,000 that we're burning off. So if you were to give that back to us and simply level fund that, and we could apply that money, I mean, it'd still have to go through the board supervisors, and you could give us the debt to carry. But if you were to level fund that debt load, then again, this could be done with no new money, no new burden on our taxpayers.
I think that would have to be prerequisite to it, but I applaud you. I think this is something we've talked about for the last three years in our monthly meetings, and so we've talked about trying to do this project. It's wonderful just to see it finally come down, you know, having on a piece of paper.
Mr. Brady, I want to say, please don't take any of my comments at the beginning of this as an insult. That wasn't meant that way.
I know.
But, you know, from being a K-12 person all my life, and I know how passionate the communities are when it comes to their kids and stuff, when I was here 25 years ago on top of that press box, I mean, it, I mean, it just chills down my spine right now to think about how exciting those games were and how enthusiastic, how, how powerful it was for the community. And, you know, that's, that's something that I, that I would hope that we could continue with. And again, if people talk about tradition, and listen, Bryant Field is a rich, rich tradition, but, you know, at some point in time, and I, I don't know how far back we'd have to go, some folks here may have to help, help me on this, but if you were to go back 40 years, 50 years, whenever they played the first football game on Bryant Field?
I'm pretty close to that.
That marked the end, though, of the tradition.
I remember, I remember in grade school, we were out there picking up rocks off the field. I graduated in 68, and Tommy Bryant was coach, Don Moore was one of the other.
Well, that first ballgame, whenever it was, marked the end of a tradition elsewhere. Wherever they played it, and I don't know where they played it, I heard it was at the fairground area.
Well, the fairground used to be where the Lily Hill is, the town of Lebanon.
Okay. So that's where football was played before Bryant Field. So again, to me, I think it's, it's a wonderful, it's a wonderful opportunity to give great, give great respect to Bryant Field and allow it to transition into maybe a new, a new tradition.
Yeah, what I was going to say is that, I don't understand a tremendous amount of change since 1968. But, you know, I, if we can figure out a way to do this without, you know, having to increase taxes and burden the taxpayers any, I'm fully supportive. I think it's something we need to do, probably should have been done several years ago, when we had the opportunity.
Well, in researching for this, I spoke to a lot of people, you know, the board chairman helped me out a lot also, with people to talk to, and, I mean, again, I understand people are concerned about taxes. I understand that. I'm a citizen, I pay taxes. But in the same breath, it's a perfect storm. We've got something that maybe, maybe won't happen again for a long time as far as debt service is concerned. So again, I think we have an opportunity, and again, with the, hopefully, the significant raise that the General Assembly has worked on, Senator Shapen and company, we're really excited about what that may bring to all of us.
Great. Just one more question, if you don't mind, and I'm going to be short. Talking about the debt load, the, looking through, while this came through the state of Virginia, and $20 additional million in capital improvement funds to the Department of Education, is this project eligible for that, that conduit under the capital improvement?
I'll have to look to see. The issue at times is athletic fields are excluded. However, I do feel, in speaking with Miss Music, that there is a good chance that there's some grant funding that may be available as well. And speaking to people, and again, I'm not recruiting here, please don't take it that way, but in speaking to people, you know, there's, there's some excitement about that. I spoke to one business, and, well, it was, it was the hospital, and they said they wanted to buy those footballs, okay? That's about $25,000, okay?
Thank you, Mr. Kenny.
So you think you should. But, you know, that's the type of conversations that we can add. People have really been very, very positive about, about the opportunity. And again, we want to work with board supervisors, and everything that we've shared, we would want, you know, Mr. Lester to validate those things and such, and we want to be very transparent. That's why this wasn't something that we just threw together. This has been something 2017, 2018. You know, we wanted you to know what the facts were. We didn't want opinion and things to be subjective, we wanted it to be facts. So again, thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Doctor.
Any violation, this code section is a place to mistreat. This code describes litter as the discard or scattering about of unsightly matter of any litter not limited to garbage, trash, refuse, or rubbish. Just a brief history about what we've done in this program. I came on board in May of 2018 of last year, upon request from Sheriff Thieb. We've been coordinating with the building inspector, Mr. Ray, and also the county administrator, Mr. Lester, in portion of this. During this time, we've had 16 complaints that have been investigated, but of the 16, five have been proven to charge or conviction. Two of the residents were able to comply with law once charges were filed, and two are still pending in court at this time. Five of the complaints were able to comply with ordinance without legal action, three didn't meet the violation, and three are still currently in the warning phase of the Complaints are received from the county administrator's office and dispatched to the Russell County Sheriff's Office or the building inspector's office. Once notified, investigation begins process. If a violation is noticed, a warning citation is issued. The code states that there's a minimum of 10 days to comply with the ordinance, but during our investigation, if they're attempting to make progress, we give them a greater amount of time. Once the resident fails to comply or comply with the ordinance, criminal charges will be obtained and taken to court. Though we found not guilty, they can have a chance to comply with law, or be found guilty and issued a fine. Currently, our goal is to work with the residents of the county to meet the letter of the ordinance without criminal charges. During this program, an average incident will occur around three months of attempting to comply with the, with the code without having to charge. I've provided some samples of some of the cases that we've worked with. The first one was one that was charged and found that they complied with law by the court. We started an investigation in May of 2018 where a warning citation was issued. And we continue to work with those residents, and on November 2018, the court found that they complied with the law. The next, the next case is one that was convicted. The investigation started in June 2018, a warning citation was issued. No improvements were made during that time, and the court found him guilty on October Third is a sample of the non-violation. The resident, or the commercial property was free of litter, no trash or anything found in the parking lot. He did have merchandise, but it was stacked outside of the storefront off of the state
Hi, you know, my man, I'll miss one on the last on the non-violation. Did y'all look down the side street? Because that's also a state accessible.
Yes, sir. There, the two, the first two pages, or the first two photos, or the side views of the
And I continually have complaints on this, on this particular one we're looking at right now.
Yes, ma'am.
The one that's signed with all appliances everywhere.
Yes, ma'am. I'm sure that, at times, they probably do.
Why does one need that many appliances sitting on the side of the road?
They said it was their business and their merchandise that they sold.
And so the back of that, you went to the back of this building too? And there's not vermin or anything around that?
I didn't observe any vermin.
They're safe? The doors are off of these refrigerators and everything that are sitting outside?
No, ma'am.
The children not to be able to get into? Is that a safety issue? I mean, I know we're on litter ordinance, but aren't you supposed to have your doors off your refrigerators that sit outside?
I'm not aware of that, ma'am. I'm just aware of the ordinance.
I know that there's something applicable to residential, but I don't know commercial or retail of that. I'll have to find out.
Any other comments? Any questions? So, with that being said, we don't have any ordinances that cover appliances everywhere. Where do these appliances fit into?
In, in the ordinance, there is, there is a code dinner for what they call white trash, you know, white disposal. It, it does, it does cover the appliances, but, but that's, if it's sitting in a residential, we went, and Amy will say where we went. We, we picked up an appliance that was sitting on a piece of property. That became a safety issue. That's residential. Now, if it's, the, the code will change to where is it retail or commercial? Because he, the, this landowner that, Hyder, went and visited, he is saying that it is his business. Does he have to remove the doors to comply with safety if that's the condition that he sells his appliances in? So, that, me and Katie will have to keep you, we'll have to look at that to be a little bit more detailed on that, that component. Now, if it's sitting out in the residential yard, it, the door must be removed. But now, if he's selling it at that condition, at retail, as a retailer, we, we'll have to give you a little bit more guidance on that.
Okay.
Is that a question?
See, Hyder?
Yes, sir.
Madam Chairman, if I may ask a question. Have you, of the cases you've listed, have you had any, I guess, subsequent violations? Have you had a person that's been convicted and still not complying, still the same issue that's been charged with the subsequent events yet?
Yes, ma'am. The one conviction that we had, he refused to clean the property or improve. He actually didn't come to court and was found guilty in sentences.
That was the second offense?
That was his first. We haven't made any progress on the second. I wasn't sure if we charged again, or the county took over with the lingering taxes, or exactly how that worked.
All right. Nikki?
Hi.
You done?
Thanks, Sergeant.
You ready?
You got all this in your packet, but, right there's the front of the house. We've been working on this one since November seventeen. All right. On February nineteenth, I did, appeared, progress has, appears to have ceased. See, as you go through here, it tells you when a notification letter was sent, and all that, eleven years, taken through. But, I need to, I need to know how the board wants, what should I do to go forward with this one?
So, what has the landowner said? Surely, like, nobody lives there, right?
All right. Last June, they said they were working on cleaning it up. Last July, they contacted my office, dated on the progress, that stated the experience delays due to work scheduling. Follow-up visit by me, could not see any progress. Now, that was all this last year. So, I mean...
So, which photo are you showing us that's got the progress on it?
Well, at first, there was vehicles all sitting through here and everything. Last May, they moved them out. And then, as you come back to these just recently, this wasn't even there in Fort. Like, they started tearing the house down, and all this fell out of it. So, therefore, we stand what?
Well, I have had another complaint that there's been vermin that's kind of leaving this residence and going over to another residence.
But, that's where I stand on this, where it was. What's our ordinance saying? What do y'all tell me there?
With their new thirty-day notice.
And I know this is, this is gonna be a little bit different because this has been an existing problem, whereas not a new case where you just recently sent out a notice. But, after you've sent out the requisite notices, and there has not been any response, then, under the revised ordinance, she would suggest a timeframe to clean, clean it up. Again, they have substantial amount of time, so I don't say any amount, the reasonable amount of time to clean it up. You might make that a little...
See, March fourth, I sent them a letter that told them I was coming to the board. Well, that's not, tonight's date, right. I sent them a letter and told them I was coming to the board to see what to do, and I hadn't heard anything back yet.
And that was the one you sent out two weeks ago?
Right. Two weeks ago. Right. Yes.
And so, in this case, they've had an ample amount of time, so a thirty-day notice before the fine would probably be reasonable under the circumstances. Again, that's, that's why you take up all of these on a case-by-case basis, because they'll all have different timeframes. But, given the amount, the amount of time that you've already given them, I wouldn't think a lengthy period before a fine is levy would be necessary. But, that would be the board, the board would need to make, if you will make a recommendation, the board could then make a motion to approve that or to set the time that they think is appropriate before that fine is levied.
Now, do I send a letter out saying they have thirty days before the fine?
Yes, that, once the board approves that timeframe, timeframe, you would send that letter.
Madam Chairman, do you need a motion now?
Yes.
Okay. Then I'll make a motion that this board allow Mickey Ray, our building official, to send an official letter of notice to this address, four-four-seven-eight Red Oak Ridge Road. Give them thirty days. From today. Can I do that?
To rectify the situation or be fined?
To be fined. Yes.
Thirty days.
So, my next question is to you, Madam Attorney, is, are they gonna, are they gonna have cause to come back and say, oh, I couldn't get this done? I've started it, and I can't get it done. Is this, is there thirty days? This is our thirty days, and that's it, right?
Well, you voted to give thirty days or a fine is approved. I do think if they approached the board and the board by unanimous vote decided to extend that, then that would be possible. But unless there was a, or not even, excuse me, I said unanimous. If there's a majority vote, then I think you would have the power to change that. But until, unless there was a majority vote to extend the time, then I don't think that you can do that. It would be, that would be automatic if the, if the problem is not fixed in that timeframe.
Okay.
Have you had a chance, I know, on individual cases, to speak to these owners of this, this property?
Yes. It was probably, uh, July last year, I know it did. The experience of due to work scheduling.
In May? May one?
Was the reasoning, was it financial reasoning? Was it health reasoning?
No.
Was it any kind of reasoning?
Their work schedule.
That's all it said. It was just based on the work schedule.
Right. They worked away from here or whatever.
All right. Do we have a motion, but, Lou, do we have a second?
I'll say.
All those, Hyder, by the way, I meant to send out this letter to this residence. Anyone opposed? All right. Yeah?
Next one. Upper Bearwall. I've been on this one since July last year.
That is workload, but if we say thirty days and they come back, just as our attorney has advised, they can come back and say, I'm sorry, oopsie, we need more time. And if they're making substantial progress, as you say they are, I would be perfectly happy with that, because I don't know a building person's schedule, and we don't know how many buckets of rain it's going to do between now and thirty days. So, I'm good with thirty days, and then we can reassess the situation. So, we don't need a motion on the, Lou, ask for a progress report on this one. We're good, right?
So, this is one where all the notices haven't gone out, where they're not complying? Is that my understanding?
It's got two, right?
Yes.
The first one, correction by, because I know that...
And I think if it's just a report from Mr. Ray, and you're comfortable with not setting that, I mean, I don't think that you're gonna be required to set, set that if you think that substantial progress is being made. It's more to finally, but, give them a timeline to either do this or...
All right. This one, all the way from the start, no response from the property owner. January this year, this office has exhausted all modifications for contacting property owner. And then, February thirteenth, it just says, I'm gonna come to the board to see or to proceed. Nobody wants to claim it. Nobody wants to say they own it. We can't afford to say it.
Whose camper is that? The camper goes with the property?
No, no.
So, you're telling us that you cannot get any response from a landowner, per se, and it's not on our tax records, who owns this property?
Property owner, Hyder, as we first came up with the Martin and Rebecca Bailey. No contact with them, no burden, no taxes paid or anything. Just said that.
I say we put it on the tax, so...
Well, you, you can, but you have, per the ordinance, Katie will chime in. You gotta send about the second notice. They have to have at least two notices to be able to bring in.
How many have you done, Mr. Ray?
Notification since July eighteen, and then August eighteen, and then eleven years.
And you've certified, okay.
Yeah. But we didn't get anything back on until then. And we went through eleven years with two weeks.
How far back on taxes?
Okay. Thanks for that right there.
it gives you the authority, once you've given all the requisite notices, to make the repairs, to keep it from being a danger, and then making whatever the cost of that a lien on the property. So, that's what this ordinance discusses.
Yes, and I understand that, and I'm sorry that I was mixing it and commingling it with that one. But I think that when we are, when we come to that conclusion, and we know that there's no owners or whatever, it needs to fall back to the tax sale or whatever, so that we can get it back on the tax roll and, and take care of it. So, that needs to be turned over. Mr. Ray, would he have to need authority from us to, to turn those things over to the tax office?
I think you just have, have to go to the treasurer's office. That would be at the treasurer.
Yes. We, we give them the documentation of what we have served, the notifications and the notifications of the property owner to attach on. And that, that letter comes from my office to the treasurer.
So, so to keep this from falling through the cracks from now on, when you find other properties like this, will that be the way it's going to be handled? Is this, is that the procedure that we do now? Yes, no, lady?
Yes. One that we did in Bunsen, have used to turn the property...
Yes, I, I just want to make sure that we're all on the same page, and we're gonna do this like the book says we're supposed to do this.
See, the last piece of property that we did, we actually tore the structure down on our own. We twisted house and attached property.
You probably need to punch your microphone so that...
Mickey, on this one, on this last piece of property, send me a letter, notify me that you have it, along with the documentation of the two notifications of certification, and we'll, we'll move it into the treasurer's.
All right. Yes. Twenty-seven forty. See, this one started out, a certain person that we had, we had the wrong mapping and whatever was wrong. So, as of thirteenth of February, we received confirmation of a mapping issue, and the property owner was resolved. So, we found out this is the wrecked property owner now. But as of today, we received, they received a notification, a registered mail.
First one?
Yes. Yeah, that's first one. But as, when we did the, she did the PowerPoint, it, we didn't have it. But we received it now. So, we're going forward on that. Okay. Infamous one. And y'all know this. Now, this is right beside the community center in Dane. That's a picture of where the rock is, of a block is fallen out over on the, I guess, county property. That's what it looks like. It's a mobile home, right in here, that burnt out. Went through all the contacting, due to work and trying to find assistance in hauling off this. This was last July. They asked for an extension. Of course, I gave it them thirty more days, and they continued to work on the site. So, I guess what they're working, they're turning more down than it's all left laying there. So, then you come all the way to February this year. I did a follow-up. Progress appeared to have ceased. No work on. Follow-up letter was to turn to the Russell County Building officials, saying the owner had moved and no forwarding, and that's low available.
I guess then, at this point, you'll make a recommendation to what you think the compliance period should be, and then they'll take a motion on whether to approve that or alter it, whatever they, whoever wants to make the motion at the timeframe. But what, I guess it's helpful if you give a recommended, recommendation what you think the compliance period should be.
See, so last July, we sent it out, and July, they responded to. Work, they were working hauling, removing debris, blah, blah, blah. They asked for an extension, thirty more days. And then they called back in December and asked for another extension. I granted it again. Now, here we stand. I went back, and all work has ceased. I mean, you can see it's a pretty good size. If you've worked on it, now, again, you could haul it off in thirty... If you've worked on it, again, you could haul it off in thirty days.
My recommendation would be, just give them, I mean, everyone that you've got from this point on, go ahead and give them the thirty days, and go and come back. That's what I would do. I would make that recommendation. I don't think you need a motion, but I think you have the authority to do that, since we've already made the motion to adopt the thirty days, right?
So you, and then you, Steve moved to change?
Current inspections on projects that have had a plan submitted and that are disturbing more than ten thousand square feet. The certified plan reviewer means an employee or agent of the Clinch Valley Soil and Water Conservation District, that would be myself, holding a ballot certificate, that would be me. I mainly wanted to bring attention to this to the board because it's been an ongoing problem, and the problem mainly arises is when development is underway, and there will be a complaint of an erosion event. With all this rain, naturally, there's going to be erosion associated with denuded soil. So with a complaint like that, this program is headed up by the Department of Environmental Quality. So without, without an inspection routine that occurs, any kind of violation of erosional activity is automatically into the enforcement stage. There is, the inspection should be there to actually catch any type of infraction that would occur, but instead, what's actually going on is, it's going straight to the enforcement stage, and any kind of land disturbing activity or any kind of development in the county is actually being hindered by the lack of these inspections that are occurring. So, as you may or may not know, Clinch Valley is, we are, we're a political subdivision of Russell County's local government, and my board is in support of us basically taking over the program. With myself being certified in all three aspects of Erosion Setting Patrol, I'm fully capable of accepting the responsibility of all three of those areas of the program. My board is also supportive of that idea of completely exiting the program. So what I wanted to alert the board this evening is, basically, how would you like to proceed?
I've got a quick question, is it okay?
Yes, sir.
I think our planning commission needs to be heavily involved in this conversation. I know, Harry, you sit on the planning commission?
Who would I do?
I think that a meeting with legal counsel, I guess, and maybe Harry could, you know, we could direct Harry to get our planning commission heavily involved in this procedure, to see what, how we actually need to do it, which we're farmers, I'm a farmer, Harry's a farmer, other people here that have relatives that farm, I think this is a critical aspect of what we need to look at moving forward. I think this is maybe a candidate being kicked down the road a little bit, and...
It's been, it's been an ongoing issue, and like I said, since I've been with the district in 2015, I've not seen one inspection ever to take place, and I think it's been, it's come way beyond.
I'm not putting words in Harry's mouth, he's on the planning, but I think that they are a critical arm, extension of us, when it comes to development, planning, they work with the local municipalities, this will affect the municipalities as well as the county as a whole. You see what I'm saying? And I think that, I'll let you speak on regards to that, but...
Well, at one time, Angie was up there, remember Angie, she was running the program on Chelsea. Mickey was also involved, he was administrator, I was the inspector. This was back, I'd done it for seven years, it was part of my job, was tax assessor. No extra pay, nothing, it was just part of my job, I was the inspector. Mickey got no extra money either, he was the administrator, then Angie got paid too, you know, y'all. And that's how it worked for seven years, and then when I quit doing it, Mickey quit doing it, I guess it's just laid out, nobody's done anything. That's the way it's supposed to be sourced out.
That's the way it is now per the ordinance.
Right.
And like I said, the ordinance has no date, and the copy of the ordinance that I have has existed at our office, and I'm really not aware of where it can be found.
But y'all have a problem with it going back to the same way it used to be? Y'all handle part of it?
So, one of the issues that arises from that is a lack of communication. With Erosion Setting Patrol, anytime a plan is submitted to Russell County, it needs to, a copy needs to go to us as the plan approving authority, and also needs to go to the building official's office. So when they do that, that's when they apply for a building permit and also a land disturbing permit. Currently, I'm not aware of any land disturbing permit that's been applied for in years.
See, families exempt, they can, they can do an exemption.
As soon as a family dwelling, correct.
Right, but then you also have like commercial, and I'm sure nobody is inspecting, doing anything on it, but there's not a whole lot going on, not a great deal, but certainly.
Well, if you'll, if you'll see the agenda that I attached, we, on average, will receive around twelve plans per year.
Right.
Of development.
Right, probably. Commercial, you're talking in town, townwide?
Anywhere in the county.
Right, okay.
Anywhere in the entire county.
This first subdivision, it's not been a subdivision down in fifteen years, but...
No subdivision, but commercial development. Typically, that's when a plan, and right outside are the very doors, there's two that are occurring. Both of those are in violation of the Erosion Setting Patrol law, because they have expanded the bounds of which the plan was initially submitted, and inspection would have caught that. So currently, where we're at, is DEQ is looking at that, they're in violation because their disturbance is more than an acre, and when they disturb more than an acre, you need a stormwater plant. So are they liable for that? Or, because, and inspection would have caught it.
Let me ask this question, or do we have jurisdiction within the town limits, or is the town, entire town?
It's countywide.
Countywide.
Anywhere in the municipality.
How's the storm?
Even though the town is zone? They don't.
Now, they don't have an inspector that, it's all on...
As far as stormwater is concerned, DEQ is handling that part. Russell County has been exempted from that portion, but as far as Erosion Setting Patrol is concerned, they have not.
Do we not have any certified?
Right now, currently, which y'all approved a few months ago, previous months, currently right now, Mickey is certified in inspection administration.
As far as I know, it's just administrator, I don't think it's inspection background anywhere.
Okay, now Terry, in the assessor's office, he is certified as an inspector, administrator, and a plan reviewer. Yeah, he's, he's, he is certified now through.
That's what I was saying, you got any problem going back to where it used to be?
If we can work out a communication effort, and part of it is just actually doing the inspections, it's one thing to go on site and say, "It looks good, there's a procedure that needs to be involved," and that's going to catch what's approved on my plan that I actually approved. To me, it kind of makes sense to, for it to be the same person and in the same office, because my eyes are on this plan, if it goes to another person, it can still work if there's communication. Without, with the lack thereof, it's going to fall apart, and it's going to do the same thing it's been doing. That's my recommendation.
Okay. My background for twelve years was a director with Clinch Valley Soil and Water Conservation District, and I spent two years on, or spent multiple years on the executive board at the state level, and finally, serving as the president of all forty-seven conservation districts. I now sit on the state water control board, serving DEQ. Violations are important for all of us, and it's critical that we take this very seriously. And in my twelve years, I had a real hard time with Russell County owning up and inspecting, and Harry, I'm sorry to throw you under the bus, kind of, but it's the truth. And so for the past couple of weeks, I've been asking for signed documents to see who is signing off on some of these projects. We don't have any signed documents that say that I, that you're taking full responsibility, and I am Russell County, I am a part of this board, I represent people in Russell County. So I find it really hard to wear a hat at the state level, and a governor appointee, and to wear this hat and to have my county not be in compliance. And I constantly hear this, so I've had a conversation several times with the county administrator, and I think we really do need to have a one-stop shop, as we call it at the state level, where you review the plans, you know what the plans are, you go back and inspect the plans. What this board is not saying, or what they may not know, is you need to be on the ground within twenty-four hours of a rain event. So you've got to be inspecting, who's going to go out there, and I...
It's an ongoing process.
It is an ongoing process, and when you disturb that ten thousand square feet, then somebody's got to take ownership of that, and I think it's critical. It's going to save us money in the long run, and it's going to get us out, all of our red marks off of the DEQ books.
And to be frank, I think that the red marks and the gaze is going to be, not to be, to the bringer of gloom and doom, but it's inevitable, and it's probably going to be not in the too far future, that any kind of enforcement action would occur.
I don't know if everybody heard, Chairman asked what my legal advice would be.
So we need to get it straight.
At this point, I mean, I would need to look at everything, and I'm happy if the board sort of directs to work with Mr. Blevins, or, do you all have legal counsel?
We do, yes.
If you want to schedule a meeting, I mean, I'd be happy to review the ordinance and everything, but I just need some direction on what you want me to do, but I don't, I don't have any answers tonight.
Katie, Harry, can I ask, would you care to meet with Katie and discuss how y'all used to do it years ago, set up, and do, and move this quickly?
At one time, the inspector couldn't be the plan reviewer, I mean, it changed.
It's in the ordinance there, it can't be the same person.
Okay.
And like, I don't know when this ordinance was written, but it's basically the same language that comes out of Virginia Erosion Setting Patrol law.
The county can be, the county can be its own inspector, its own administrator, and its own plan reviewer, okay?
That's a possibility.
Okay, so, but you've got to have those people in place that are certified by the state of Virginia to do this. It's a costly position to have when you already have technical assistants that are, that stand in before you that can do all these, and doesn't have to be the residential pieces, it doesn't have to be water lines, they've got blanket permit.
On occasion, they do submit plans, if it's a utility, say, such as AEP, a lot of times, their kind of utility work is covered, but AEP's, I mean, to brag on AEP, they're pretty well on it with their Erosion Setting Patrol compliance, and they're great to work with, they're one of the few, to be honest.
And this is not to be confused with agriculture community, the agriculture community is strictly volunteer. So if I want to fence my cows out of the creek, I can come to you...
Yes, that's a voluntary program, there's no law that says...
For state, federal money, I can get that, I don't have to do that. So this is not the same thing, this is not an inspector on the ground in the agriculture community, this is strictly in the enforcement and the inspection area of the buildings that we're going to have. If we're going to grow any, we're going to have to have a building inspector that's going to be able to comply with this. And I think that when people call and say, "I want to see, I want to see the signature of whoever signed off on this thing," I want to see it. And so, Mr. Lester, I will tell you that this has been going on before you.
And one of the things for...
And what I was going to suggest, maybe, since this, and, and just to double check with Mr. Blevins, my understanding, on behalf of your organization, if this is going to, if the ordinance is going to continue as written, you would like to update the memorandum of understanding between the organization and the county?
That would need to be updated, yes, ma'am.
I think it might, would be helpful, Madam Chair, maybe, to form a committee with me, to meet with Mr. Blevins and anyone from his organization to try to work out a new memorandum of understanding of how this is going to go.
That would be a good time to also update the ordinance.
Yeah, well, I was getting ready to say, we and Terry, I mean, we went back through the school, you know, under Title sixty-two, the new DEQ ordinance for, yeah, erosion and sediment, it's got a ten plate ordinance in it, you know, that's applicable to the county. So we already have this in draft form, it's already been tweaked based off the new code structure, so what would have to come in place is who's going to perform what. Because the NNS, out of Title sixty-two, pretty well assess, you know, administrator, inspector, plan reviewer. And if you compare the current code to ours, it does change a lot. It is very antiquated, our ordinance, so the MOU would have to be upgraded, our draft under the DEQ Title sixty-two would have to be implemented, and then the program implemented.
All right, I'm going to ask, Mr. Ferguson, he would care to serve, Lou, would you care to serve, or would it be a conflict for you, since you are in the state level?
Me? I'm Dr. Chris. I think Mr. Ferguson can handle that very nicely, just please handle it.
Katie? Okay, and I'll, I'll serve on that too, be too, if I can't meet, Harry can, if he's there, I'll be there, so we'll start meeting with you and try to update it. Katie, you just let us know when you need us, and we need to get this quick.
Is you going to do this, you know, since this thing is five years old, this thing was procured at one time, Kay, could you see if that's something we need, will we be in violation of procurement law if we, is this something that needs to be procured, if it's a request for services and such?
Yes, we'll have to, we'll have to leave that, if there's going to be a person that's hired or something like that, I think right now, we're just going to, what we want to do going forward, potentially, if there is anybody...
Several years ago, I think, when it first came out, it was procured, there was a procurement that came out. I just don't want to, I don't want to do anything to...
If the county's going to have a new employee or contract any useful services, that's probably what we're going to have.
We just need to look at, see where we are.
And just to be clear, you know, we're happy to engage in the procurement process, but my board is pretty clear, you know, it's either all or none, no difference.
But didn't you say to start out with that you were, you were ready to offer all three parts?
Well, currently, set up, currently, my certification expires next year.
At no extra cost to the county, what we're paying already?
That would need to be addressed.
Negotiated?
That would be me negotiating, yes, ma'am.
I know, I know what you're getting.
Anything else, any other questions?
Ladies and gentlemen, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
We have Ms. Leah Call with Appalachian Agency for Senior Citizens.
Good evening, everyone, my name is Leah Call, and I am the Director for Nutrition at Appalachian Agency for Senior Citizens. With me, I have Mr. Jackie Ray, he is our property manager for Appalachian Agency. And first thing I would like to bring before you, this is my consideration for a proclamation which proclaims March 2019 as the seventeenth annual March for Meals Month. For over forty years, AASC has provided home-delivered meals to homebound seniors in Russell County, and this proclamation would only raise more awareness for singer, senior hunger in our community, and how our program is working to decrease that number of individuals who are affected. I have copies of this, if Madam Chair will allow me to distribute. Please do.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion if we proclaim March 9, uh, March 2019, the 17th Annual March for Meals Month.
All those in favor? Let's get from that side. March 22nd, 1972, I did not realize that Meals got started.
Yeah, it's amazing how it's grown. We are proud to be a home-delivered meal program who is an official Meals on Meals member, and I love that, you know, we're trying to spread the word, this is available in Russell County. And AASC Congress at sites serves 32 Russell County seniors with 5,767 units of service, which includes meals, nutrition and wellness education, as well as social and recreational time. Right now, we are in the process of moving our Swords Creek senior citizens because the HVAC system is beyond repair, and now we've been busing them to our Richland site, and although we strive to provide comparable services at that location, our Russell County seniors have diligently indicated that they would like to be back in their home county. So, we are requesting the use of the Russell County PSA building that will allow that to happen for our seniors while providing, you know, a more level place for our seniors to get in and out of the building. It's a newer building, it's a nicer building, it is a little smaller, but we can work with it. We also have a great place to have some of our warehouse storage in that building, which will just be wonderful compared to where it is currently.
We made, we made a visit that day, and Wayne Bostick was there with us, and he's got the scene, the apartment scene for your kitchen, it's available anytime, and last month, we voted to go ahead and do this for you.
Great.
So, we're ready to move right along with Swords Creek, and don't blame that.
Yes, and I know the Dainte Lees Agreement will be something that'll be worked up next, and that's so exciting for me in particular, because I think home-cooked meals coming out of that kitchen has been something that I personally wanted for Dainte since I took my role in this position in 2017. So, thank you so much for, you know, putting the initiative in there. I've talked to Ms. Wallace, I've talked to Mr. Lester about this, and they are very excited about it as well. And I think not only will it help our program, which is there from 10 to 1 o'clock two days a week, but it'll also just help the Dainte community just have a place where they can come and be able to prepare those meals and open up more involvement, more activity in that community center. I do have Mr. Ray here, so if you have any questions for him on any, on the upgrades or things that we're prepared to do for Swords Creek, a turnaround, things of that nature, I want to turn it over to him right now.
You still gonna put a canopy over the door? New sign?
Yep.
All right. And we'll use that back room to store things. And all that, those tables and chairs out in the front room.
Yeah, we'll build shelves in the back so we can keep everything organized and have the best shipments come in, so.
What about the Cleveland Community Center and Feeny Community Center?
Those currently aren't our, we do not manage those. We do handle the accounting for them because they need a nonprofit organization to do their, since the county can't take care of those funds. We do their accounting, but those property, those sites are not managed by AASC. We do have aid across the Ford County area, those two are not ours.
We'll let you know, too. I met with People Inc. and had that conversation about, and they're willing to partner with you guys on a larger venue if needed at the Givens Elementary School. They wanna work something out, so you guys would have access to that evenings and weekends or weekend events. So, they said they would love to have a meeting, and they'll work something out with you guys on that more larger venue area.
Yeah, anytime you'd like to discuss that with us, just give us a call, we will, you know, be glad to have a meeting.
Do you have a floor?
I can give you my information, absolutely.
Under my county administrator's request, I also have the authorization for the Appalachian Agency for Senior Citizens lease at the Swords Creek Community Center. You currently have a lease at the Swords Creek Community Center, but on the old dilapidated building that we had to move them out, et cetera, et cetera. So, I have put on the agenda for approval for the new lease. You guys provide the electrical, the water sewer, the internet, you're gonna do the upgrades and the maintenance and serve the meals. So, I'm going to ask for that to be signed, because it's a new, it's a existing lease, it's just moving to the, from one location to the other. So, the Dainte, we discussed today, so we've gotta do some modifications to that agreement, and that will be signed on the next one, that we'll have Dainte ready to rock to.
Thank you.
And the last order of business I would like to ask, I know we do have four and a half chest freezers here at the Government Center, and I know that they are making room for possible DSS offices, I think was what was told. Okay. And we were needing some assistance in, in finding another home for those freezers, possibly in Russell County, because, well, we provide 151 citizens with 33,553 meals in 2018, and the majority of those meals are picked up from this location, because it's just more efficient for our driver, who primarily serves in Russell County. And having that access in Russell County is really imperative to the program as it is now. So, I was, you know, wanting to throw that out there for suggestions, if Mr. Lester may have had a suggestion.
Yeah, look, I talked to Regina, and we looked at logistically what, what areas are served. The, the location where the majority of these meals would be served would be in the Castlewood area. And I was thinking that at the bottom of the Castlewood Community Center.
Well, we should just take up our Zumba space that we wanna do, and exercise. Thanks, Leah. We need to eat, too, but exercise.
I agree.
I think, I've got the, they're currently down here right now, but with logistically them traveling back and forth, either some location in the community center, so if you could look in the Castlewood area, that was, what came to my mind first was the Castlewood Community Center, the downstairs.
I agree, but there's a little section in the back of that that would hold the four freezers, did you say?
It's four and a half, yeah. They're, yeah. Four and a half. That would be wonderful, really appreciate that.
So, do you want me to approach Castlewood Fire and Rescue?
Please, sir.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you for that. Anyone have any further questions?
Thank you for what you're doing. Appreciate it.
Thank you, ma'am.
It's a great, it's a great thing, and we thank you for your support.
All right, we now have one board appointment. This is for the Cumberland Mountain Community Service Board. They did send us a letter, Mary Cole wrote it, the executive director, asking that we replace Dr. Barbara Fuller with Mr. James Mounts to serve on her board for three years. Do we have a motion for this position?
I'll make that motion, Madam Chair.
Second. All right, all those in favor, Mr. James Mounts. If you'll contact him and let him know that we took care of that.
Yes, ma'am.
All right, our new business is approval for our minutes from our board meeting February the 4th. We have a motion to approve the minutes.
I'll make that motion, Madam Chair.
Second.
David, Steve, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right, approval of their expenditures.
And Chairman, I'll make a motion with approval of expenditures.
I'll second it.
Steve and David, thank y'all, all those in favor?
Aye.
Katie? Can you give me the sheet, sign it, please? All right, now, we have our citizen's comment period, she's gonna get the signing sheet. I'll call your name, will you come to the podium, and please state your name and your address for the record. And we have each citizen, and it is limited to a three-minute. Ors Christian.
I'll try not to speak.
Okay, all right, thank you.
I'll put that down in case I need to.
Okay, all right, thank you. Kelly Dell?
Good evening. I am coming to you to share with you something, and I wish I could've shared with you last month, but I had the blue. Some of you have attended some of our events for our NEA Big Read grant. It's a community read, we wanted to get everybody to read this same book, I highly recommend it, even if you're not a reader, there's, it's short stories, and they're, they're not easy, everybody doesn't live happily ever after, but they are readable stories, and some of them, that, some of them, yeah, don't start with the first story if you like animals, okay? It's not a big spoiler word, 'cause the dog dies really early in the story. But go to, read The Dead Confederates first, that one's funny. Most of them are contemporary stories. This is a pretty big deal. It was a nationwide competition for a grant, 75 of them were given across the United States, Russell County got one of them. We have arranged a month of events, you've missed many of them, but the author, Ron Rash, is going to be here. He has won awards, he's had a movie made into a book, although everybody that's read the book says, "Oh, the movie's a terrible one." Read the book, but, you know, people that read always say that. But apparently, he doesn't like the way they did the movie either, but, you know. He's gonna be here, right down the hall, Thursday, 7:00 PM, and I hope that you will all be there. And we've given away, given away nearly 300 copies of this book, so there are a lot of people, high school students, book groups, reading it, and I thank you.
Thank you, Karen.
Alan Sargent?
I'm Alan Sargent, my address is 2719 15th and 4th Road, I'm later, we're getting here, 24260. When I come down here, Paul, I don't know if you've made any progress, I'm a disabled veteran, with a 100% disability, cannot pay taxes on one vehicle. At the present time, nothing been made about it, done nothing, port your attention, paid for approval or disapproval. You wanna know anything else? Is that for plain money? See, I've been going to Mr. Reed, or talking to him, advocating him to that, he's got a business, and he ain't got time for all this. So, I thought I'd come down here and get this through, my horse is bound, whether anything's gonna be done or not. I do know Tassell County's got it, and this is just how, like, up headed county's got it, Scott County, and Boise County, Dixon. But I am definitely about Tassell County. This other is just talk, like you go to a public health meeting or something like that. You know, you hear a lot of talk, can't you? There about one, two, about four, everybody's all known, Lonzo, all right? That's Ray. I guess I'm a stranger to the rest of them.
Not Neil. Not Neil, we've met you, Neil.
All right. What do you think about this?
Well, we need to speak with our Commissioner of Revenue, see what the impact, speak with Lonzo, you need, we'll have to see what, like, an impact study, and we'll discuss it.
How long will it take to process this?
It should take too long.
It shouldn't take too long, you know, being a veteran, we can take a look at this and look at the numbers and see.
Well, they'd be due again in November, you know. They'd give you nine months. That'd give you nine months to do it.
We should be able to do it by now.
How are we gonna know? Want to get a tax ticket, or somebody gonna tell us, or what?
No, any, anything tax changes that the, that the board supervisor does has to be published, yes, and voted and publicized. It would be published.
How long will it take to, thank you, ma'am?
We have to set the tax rates by June 30.
Okay. Now, no.
Thank you, sorry. Thank you, thank you for your service.
Any constitutional, any constitutional officers here, reports or requests?
Can I say something?
Yes, Steve.
Can I make a comment?
Yes. You'll put your, you'll put your name down and address.
I wasn't planning on speaking until this conversation came up again, Kalen Urban, 22587, US Highway 58 in Castlewood. This conversation gets brought up a lot, that I've heard at these meetings, and Ms. Wallace was the one that brought it up tonight. The property on the way to Dainte with all the appliances, that's kind of personal to me, because my parents, my grandparents live right behind there. I understand that the building itself is not necessarily deemed unsafe, but I do believe that the appliances outside of it are. I have an 18-year-old brother who believes that he could be a NASCAR driver, and there are some times that it is extremely unsafe to have to pull out from that property due to the appliances sitting out front of it, especially if a vehicle is parked in front of the appliances. Not only do you have to look around the appliances, you also have to look around the vehicles that are parked there. So, when you're turning in, there are sometimes appliances sitting in the driveway that my parents and grandparents have to go up to get to their home, behind the prop, behind the building, they are starting to come out in the driveway. Mr. Lester probably gets kinda tired of seeing my name pop up on his phone, 'cause I'm pretty notorious for sending him pictures when he gets back. Because when I go to visit my parents, I don't wanna have to worry about whether or not I'm gonna get hit by a car when I'm trying to pull out from their house, and I don't wanna have to think about them doing the same thing either. So, if there's anything that we can do as a community to get that issue resolved, I know there's a lot of people that would be pretty willing to do just about anything, 'cause it is an ongoing issue. They do clean it up every now and then, and it looks good for maybe about a week, and then they start coming right back out after there's nobody there to take it out again. So, if there's anything that we can do, just let me know.
Is there, just a quick question, on the street that's going down the side like I was sure of, is that staying clean? I mean?
It depends. Sometimes you can go by, and there will be anything, and then the next day, you could go, and there will be another line of appliances. I understand that this isn't the, not necessarily the fault of the business owners, but people treat that as a trash dump sometimes, and they will go if they want to get rid of an appliance, and they'll go after business hours, sometimes during business hours, and just dump an appliance out. And sometimes it's where it should be, sometimes it's in the middle of their driveway, and it will sit there however long. And as far as the vermin that was also mentioned, multiple times, I have driven past to go to my parents' house, and there's refrigerators sitting there full of food, that's been sitting there for however long, so you can imagine what is in and around it. The property owners will clean up after they do receive a notice, because I have intentionally gone past, and I know that they probably have received one, just to see if it's been cleaned up, and they will clean it up to the point that it looks okay, but then, like I said, within another two weeks, it's right back to how it was, if not worse. So, it's just a continuous progression, that's. That's not progressing. It's declining every time you go past.
Has anybody ever met with this business owner to look at maybe an alternative solution? Or, I mean, I know we, me and Steve worked prior to move Jeremy down to the transfer station, and he's got a dynamic business in its outside Alamoine, and he's doing a good service for our community. I know this is actually a business person. You know, has anybody had a conversation or looked within the county area to see if there's a place that we could help him, or a local IDA could help him to establish a different look or concept?
The individual that's in there right now, he is renting. Oh, I'm sorry. The individual that's in there right now, he's renting. Second, we, we did send Jeremy down there. We sent a fifty cubic yard to clean, you know, clean it up.
No, I'm not talking about that. I'm talking about him as an established business moving him to another on, outside Alamoine location that would help him.
We've never looked at it from our perspective. We, we went down there.
I think it'd be a good idea to have a conversation with him.
I like that idea.
Well, I mean, I mean, there's, you know, there's, there's places within the county that he does a great service for some people. If you can go down there and buy a product, or I bought all kinds of parts off of him.
It, I mean, it's a good thing for the community, and it helps them after, but because it is a business, you have the appliances out front. Sometimes the appliances are not the issue. Sometimes it is the parking because they pull in, you know, about Highway sixty-three, they park right, all of the highway.
Oh, I'm totally in agreement with you, Karen.
So when we go to pull out, your view is obstructed by the appliances as well as we.
I'm just wondering where he just leases, if there's an alternative solution, a place that if he could do a service or, I mean, how many acres do we own down our whole, we put Jeremy? You know?
With that building he's got, that's a huge bill. Can I put him inside?
It's, it's all well.
He's got parts to any Calvinator, Maytag.
Is it, is that side street a B-Dot Road? It is?
B-Dot blocks them, like.
And need to see if the B-Dot couldn't work in. Could they put a right-of-way fence in?
Well, can't, you can't block it, but when we go, like Kalen said, when we go down there, it gets cleaned up. Then B-Dot Eagle and Run, you know, they're not the enforcement code, and we are too. Between us sending Hider Down and Mickey Down and B-Dot Down on, on this, it, it'd be continuous inspection.
Looks to me like he could at least put some no parking signs out in front where the appliances are. Is there, I think, just enough room to get one car off the road?
On the building?
They park in a line down parallel with Highway sixty-three.
They'd be one of them.
So you can, you know, fit, I'm seeing four vehicles lined up there at any given time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Karen.
I don't see any constitutional officers. Katie, county attorney reports and requests.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And first thing that we have is the CWSA resolution, dissolution, transfer of assets. Right now, I'm still working on that and, for the next step for the board, and it's not an agenda item, so there's nothing you need to do on it right now. For the solid waste convenience property user agreement between the county and the town of Lebanon, I have worked this past week with Kevin Keeler, the town attorney, to, to fix this agreement, to get this, this site started. The only addition I have from what was for, to the agreement that's provided in your packet is just that Kevin requested that we put in there that the county agrees to provide a privacy fence and to, that we agree to do landscaping and plant trees that will help privacy. So I do think this is a good agreement, and I think it's ready for your approval.
So we need a motion? Do we have a motion to go into an agreement with the town of Lebanon on the new trash site?
Some move.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Tim, thank you. All those in favor?
The next item I have is a moral obligation to Virginia Community Capital concerning Project Blue Jay. I do not have a draft copy of this in your packet. I've been working on it up until today. I will say it's substantially similar to the one that's provided, to, that was provided in your packet regarding the town of Lebanon, and just changing some of the descriptive terms. I did send it to Cindy Snyder with Virginia Community Capital to make sure that VCC was in agreement with it. I have not heard back from her yet, so if you do, I would ask you to approve this moral obligation subject to VCC's recommendations and final approval of legal counseling.
I'll make that motion on what legal dis?
Legal counsel.
Second.
Second, Steve. All right. This is a moral obligation with a project, so all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
And the next item we have is another moral obligation to the town of Lebanon concerning Project Blue Jay. This has been, this is in your packet, and it has been approved by the town. So I would just ask that you approve this moral obligation regarding the town of Lebanon's bond for Project Blue Jay at this time.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right, and?
The next thing I have is Elk Garden School, and we continue that public hearing, so there's nothing that we need to address on that at this time. And you all held your public hearing on the unsafe building we're in, and moved to amend it to define the compliance theory. So unless there are any further questions of me on this matter, I don't have anything further at this time on that. And then the last thing we have is the county litter ordinance. Hider did come and present what's happening. I think that was Ms. Wallace's question at the last meeting, is how is this being enforced? I'm happy to, I have, I have briefly discussed the issue with Sheriff Dye and Zach Stuves, co-attorney, but I'm happy to take any direction the board wishes me to do on the litter ordinance at this time. I mean, the litter ordinance, I mean, he is enforcing it. I guess the only, I mean, there's nothing that could be done tonight, but I don't know if the board, is there any concerns they have that the ordinance may need to be amended, something that's not being included, or?
Do I need to change it?
I mean, I do, and to, to sort of expound on what Hider said, a lot of times when you do go to court, the court will give you a chance, and he used the term comply with law. We usually hear that more like if you, you know, don't have an inspection sticker, and then you come back to court and you have your inspection sticker, the court will usually find that you comply with law. So if you do, I mean, it is the resolution that the, that the county wants. If they get a ticket and then they clean it up, then their charge will be dismissed. So, I mean, I think that will help achieve the county's purpose, you know, objective in, in keeping the county in a clean and safe condition. So it, it is, it is at least getting the attention of some people to, to get that. Unfortunately, that would be violations, and, and, you know, we may have to come back and find solutions for repeat offenders, and that may be something that we need, or people who refuse to comply with the law. That may be something we need to address, but it sounds like that there is being some enforcement, and, and it is helping to solve the problem.
Thank you. Anything else I say to work? All right. Now we have the county administrator reports and requests. Mr. Lester?
Thank you, Madam Chairperson. Just to expand real quick before we move on to the reports on the litter ordinance, this litter ordinance does follow the Code of Virginia. This is one of the ones that is templated, and it is most current with, yes, just, yes. First on the county administrator reports and requests is, of course, the information concerning Route six thirteen, Route six twenty-four, and Route six seventy-eight. Y'all have had an opportunity to read through the very comprehensive projects. This is the way you will see these come through B-Dot now. On these three ones, it must be, they do give the permitted activity, ensure that all environmental and quality and, and they've been given their due diligence through all three of the projects. If you have any other questions, only the run Route six thirteen, six twenty-four, six seventy-eight, you know, we can address those, you know, at convenience, just let me know. Next on the county administrator reports is the Virginia Department of Criminal Justice Services grant application for the Home Anchor Elementary Resource Officer. This is the application only. This is the submission that's, it's when we get the money back, and I'll be coming back with the board for the preparation. To follow up in our support for the litter ordinance, Brian Ferguson, which is over, you know, the county solid waste, he, we, he works with the grants to be able to do household hazardous waste collection days, and this will be on April the seventeenth, two thousand nineteen, from ten to two PM. And we welcome all Russell County citizens, you know, to bring in their, their shredded or their household goods that they want to be recyclable.
And it is here at the Governance Center at Clark Block.
Yes, ma'am. And if you need to know a little bit more of the directions, look on the county website, our Twitter account, or our Facebook account, and this will be listed in the items that is applicable. Next on the county administrator request is, of course, the American Red Cross Proclamation for the month of March. So this will need a motion for the proclamation. Some move.
Do we have a second? Carl? All right. All those in favor recognizing air red cross?
Okay. Next is the authorization upon, for the authorization for the Appalachian seniors lease for the Source Creek Community Center. The board supervisors had worked out an agreement with the Russell County PSA to take possession of this piece of property for the Source Creek Community Center because at the time, and to her previously, the citizens were temporarily going into, of course, Tassell County, which we, that we, we couldn't have. So to work this out with the agreement to then move forward under the current lease, which they have in the, in the older building, which is no longer, no longer can we occupy, that we'll move the lease into the new one, and a motion for approval upon the, upon council review.
I have reviewed the lease, and for the most part, I see that it's okay, but the one thing that it does not have is it does not have a section that would allow either party to terminate the lease on, on, by giving a certain amount of notice, and I would, I would suggest that you add something like that in there. That way, at least you could, you know, either party can end the lease without waiting for the, a term to end. Basically, there's, unless, unless the Appalachian agency goes to funk, there's no, the lease is just in existence for five years with no way to end it.
Well, I'll make that motion upon the recommendation by the league of council to add that.
How many days per year?
Ninety days.
That's fine. Whatever timeframe that you think would be appropriate for the circumstances, and just either party by giving a written notice to the other party can terminate the lease.
I have that language, Philip. All right.
I'll second.
And, all right, Harry, second. What? All those in favor?
Thank you, board. Next is the authorization for the Virginia Department of Transportation, Transportation Alternative Program Grant for the Daint Depot Project. This is to, this is the project administration agreement and the projects, the project scheduled to be able to move forward with this project and program. This for the Committee of Daint Restoration of the Historic Railroad Depot. The board had already approved resolution in supportive on this before, and the approval of the half grant. This is just the program to proceed on with the project administration and the process schedule. I need a motion for the project administration agreement and the schedule.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make that motion that we proceed with the, whatever Mr. Lester said over there. I had part of it down and I lost it. Sorry.
Project administration.
Program administration. Program administration. We've got the money. You got a grant.
I'll second.
And that was wonderful. That's fantastic. And so David will second. Now, this is grant money to improve the area. So all those in favor?
Madam Chair, did we skip that?
We did that earlier.
We did it earlier. Thank you, thank you, Harry. Appreciate you. Keep me in line.
This has been a long meeting, hasn't it?
Okay. Thank you, Madam Chairperson. Next is the authorization of board to equalization pay and expenses. The board has been approved. They've been trained. They've already been doing the, the interviews. They've been doing the equalization members. Yes, they have. They, this has been a good year. I need the approval for the board equalization pay, which is one hundred and twenty-five dollars. Some move in expenses. Yes.
Second.
All right. All those in favor? Any opinions? Any opposed?
Yes. Next is the authorization to hire. I already had this before, but just to bring the board to know, previous, in the January board, I asked for authorization to advertise and hire for a housekeeping position. I did interview at the housekeeping position and made selection for it. Y'all have approved that. You don't need to make another motion on it. So we did approve that to hire, advertise and hire. Next is the authorization for the Appalachian Gateway Horse and Trail Association event. I need a motion on this for the association, and that is?
Yeah, what we need, do we need? Okay, for ma, do a motion, and then we need to discuss.
Yeah, I'd like to make that motion.
All right, Carl, second?
Second.
All right, Steve, okay. Discussion, please. What is this?
Do you have the, Harvey Lee, do you have the motion on this? It's a, it's a veterinarian clinic day. They have a veterinarian that is gonna be on-site, and people have the ability to have their Coggins done. I, I really honestly don't wanna go into too much detail on this because I don't know everything about it. Apologize. I seen Harvey leave, or JJ couldn't make it in. I had him working late this evening, so if it's okay. That's what the summary of that Harvey didn't convey to me.
He want, I think the question was, does this fall under the county's insurance since there's, is their event?
It's their event. Do they have to provide insurance?
I think if it was theirs, they fell under the county.
If here, if they hold the event, they survive the insurance. If the county sponsored that event, they'd come under our vacant insurance. That's what, that's the way it works.
But we don't, I mean, I know that there's an event that comes around and ducks, that does rugby shots for the dogs, and that's his. We don't sponsor it, so what should we do, Karen?
Well, I, I do think, I do think you should let me look at this a little bit further before you approve it. Again, you know, something that you always have to be aware of is precedent, you said. If, if a group is going to fall under your insurance, that's always a concern. Is that something that you're gonna provide to any nonprofit group? So if, if, if the board doesn't mind, I'll, I'll look into that matter just a little bit further and report back to you.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Lonzo, do you have the date on this, ma'am?
Lonzo, do you have the date on this, ma'am?
It is April the fourteenth.
April fourteenth.
That'll be, that'll give us time. She can, uh, so we'll reconvene and we'll be back. We have another meeting.
You just sort of withdraw it.
Or do you, do we need to withdraw it or just table it to give us further legal advice?
I would just table it.
Okay. Let's just table it to further.
After I.
Advice and she'll let us know at our next meeting.
Thank you, Madam Chairperson. Next is, um, the, uh, last on the county administrator reports and requests is authorization of travel quest. I have a request from Crystal Light to attend the deputy, uh, class. This is the, from March nineteenth through twenty-second, uh, to Bedford, Virginia.
Some move.
Second.
Let me see, a second from David. All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Madam Chairperson, that concludes the county administrator reports and requests.
All right.
Any other matters presented by the board? Tim, do you have anything you want to talk about?
I'm good, thank you.
Luke?
Oh, yes.
That's what we, that's what we women are good for. We can think of lots of things to talk about.
Um, actually, we have discussed this before and I just want to remind, um, the board and, uh, the county administrator that, uh, when Ms. Owens was here, she discussed, um, bringing, uh, having her plaque and her dedication. You got that? Okay, well, we haven't had the road worked on and we haven't had the heaters fixed and, okay. The tourism, uh, board is, has doing meetings across the county and down in the Castlewood area, um, the asset down there is the old county courthouse. And so, they want to do a meeting there. Instead, they had scheduled it at the Copper Creek Elementary School, which is across the street, which is not a problem, but that's a shame. So, if you could have someone to look at that and check with the tourism authority and see when exactly that meeting is, it would be lovely to host, um, the tourism board down there. And that.
Hope the heaters had been done.
Yeah, I was, uh, actually, my maintenance supervisor, he, he gave me the list of everything that was done there. We, we keep very due diligence on this, Helen.
Ms. Owens company has given me an earful.
So, here's what we've done. We've already put the lights on the flag post. We've already put the water sill on the bricks. We have already fixed the bathroom. We fixed the heaters in there. The, uh, in the craft house, we've done the floor and heater in the back room. We put the heaters in the schoolhouse. Everything is working and the light switch is in schools and the lights are inside the house. What we do not have done yet, I have one, I've got to get the gravel road done, but it's been so wet. If we go in there right now, it will do, it will not look good because it's got grass in between. We've looked at it, so we're trying to give it time to dry out to be able to shake it.
Now, Mr. Lester, you're using that same excuse that we've heard all evening long.
I'm sorry, that's a stop raining.
I just had to say that. Can we not put some gravel in the ruts so that people can drive their cars up there just temporarily or whatever? It doesn't have to be a four lane.
If we do that, it will not stay. I, I was trying to get it fixed to where it's permanent because the way it's rutted, it's, we can put the stone on it with the grass, but right now I have a mixture of the two. I'll be glad to do it and we can, we can mix it later for right now.
I don't know when the event is. It's coming up.
Okay, it's here for that.
Carl, you here with me?
I am.
David?
Just one thing, Madam Chair. Uh, just want to shout out to the Home Anchor Girls Basketball Team. We're going to have them, uh, pep rally in the morning, send off at eleven. Uh, they're going to the final four, so good luck Tigers. And I'll tell you, after tonight, you can see that we have some outstanding students in Russell County and, uh, kudos to all of them. I'm so proud of all these youngins.
Steve?
No, ma'am, I want to make a thing.
Eric?
No.
Katie, did you need press to reconvene, uh, on the fourteenth? What time? Ten?
All right. Yes. Um, I, I have, I have one other matter. I apologize. Um, Ernie, Ernie reminded me of this, um, right before the meeting started, but, um, for the VCC moral obligation that you all approved, um, they wanted, um, a specific, um, they wanted part of that resolution to authorize the chairman to sign those documents. Um, so if we, if, if you could just pass a motion for that, that way that they can have, um, that, I assume at some point they're going to want a copy of our minutes for their records.
I'll make a motion. I'll second.
And all those in favor allowing me to sign the documents?
Aye.
Right, we will reconvene on March the fourteenth, that is a Thursday, at ten o'clock.
Here.
Here, in, all right.
I'll make it motion. We'll be returned to reconvene, March the fourteenth, ten A.M. here in Gordon.
All right.
Second.
Mitch. Steve and David. All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, see you on March fourteenth.